Basically, the line right over here, if you can see my laser pointer, it hasn't worked too great, but that is Waverly Road. Down this line is Homestead Road, and this road right up here is 191st Street for everybody to get their bearings. The project currently, that's currently being done through an SRF loan procured by Edgerton, includes the wastewater treatment plant, which is just below the screen here, the interceptor that comes up the road, a pump station that serves this area, a pump station that serves this area, and the force main that goes all over to serve Gardner. That project stops at a shared trench right in this area on 191st Street. The remainder of the project is purely for the, for serving City of Gardner. And that includes a continuation of that force main all the way down 191st across Waverly, north from Waverly and 191st to a planned pump station sitting just east of Waverly Road, and then a gravity interceptor that follows the line of this creek all the way back to where it'll connect with an existing city force main. So the city force main will get tapped by an adjustable valve and metered at that point. And that flow that comes out of that force main that would otherwise go to your existing wastewater treatment plant, and that would otherwise go through your existing pump station system, will instead go by gravity down to Waverly Road and then get pumped all the way down across 191st Street, down Homestead Lane, and to the wastewater treatment plant that will be shared by Gardner and by Edgerton. The capacity of the treatment plant will be approximately half million gallons per day, and by the intermunicipal agreements, Gardner will have a right to use up to half of that, 250,000 gallons per day for treatment, and Edgerton will have the right to half of that treatment as well. A quick breakdown of costs for all these facilities, and these will be costs for Gardner, okay? So Gardner's responsible for half the cost of the treatment plant, which is $5.1 million. Their responsibility is for that incremental upsize to the gravity interceptor. It was originally sized just to serve the aermoto facility in Edgerton, 24-inch pipe. We had to upsize it to a 30-inch pipe to convey the water from Gardner. So that upsize has cost $1.2 billion in additional pipe size, additional trench excavation of many materials. The portion of the force main that goes in a shared trench up Homestead Lane and over 191st Street, it'll lie in the same trench as the force main that serves Edgerton's project, that's $400,000. Okay, once you get outside there and you're purely in Gardner's infrastructure, the gravity interceptor will cost about $2.2 million, is the ballpark estimate in there. The lift station along Waverly Road, and the metering, and the actuated valve were estimating somewhere around $400,000. And the remainder of the force main to connect that system to what's already being built for Edgerton will be another $400,000. We're also requested to talk about what the alternatives are and how we evaluated those alternatives. Really, the only alternative to doing this was to do a, you know, in the fairly near future, an upsize to Gardner's existing wastewater treatment plant. And because of its design and its configuration, you can only upsize it in certain increments. That smallest increment of upsize was estimated to cost $16 million. And then you'd need an additional $9.1 million in conveyance. So you're working along the line of $25 million for Gardner to have to pay to maintain its own infrastructure and expand it accordingly compared to the cost that I already laid out throughout the process. The other piece we have here is some phasing and some operations and maintenance. This project is planned to be up and running in 2013. Depending on the growth seen at the aermoto facility, the plant may need an expansion around the 2016 to 2017 timeframe. It's truly dependent on growth, and so the thought is that when it needs to be expanded, there will be additional sources of revenue to pay for it. If that growth doesn't happen, that expansion gets pushed back farther and farther into the future. O and M costs for the plants, for the entire plant are around $230,000. And so there is a line item in the SRF loan that covers O and M costs paid for by Gardner. But what that is going to be in is in the wholesale service that you pay the City of Edgerton for for taking your wastewater and treating. That wholesale price per down includes O and M costs. Anything else we have here? There's also going to be the SRF loan, and then a discussion on how that would affect user rates. Ms. Gorley can talk about that.
I can.
Yeah.
Well, just, so, I made a, an assumption, now, I made the assumption based on $9 million, and Mr. Keller just went over that a little bit, but on a $9 million project, and we can, this loan was going to be done in phases, but I think when you hear how much it'll impact, you won't be concerned. Estimated $9 million project with payments beginning in 2014, because that's about the time they'll kick in. And what this project enabled us to do was to delay our Kill Creek wastewater treatment plant expansion that we were calling 13 million all along here as staff, and another $2 million worth of force main, a coinciding force main for that project. So we delayed $15 million worth of projects by doing this through 2018. So on this spreadsheet, you can see, and I can make it bigger if you guys would like. Can you see it okay, or do you need to make it bigger? A little bit bigger?
Yeah.
A moment, let me try.
My vision's terrible.
About that, okay. Anyway, as you can see, in 2013, I recently told the city council that the staff is currently estimating an 11% increase in the survey. That is not to do with this project, has nothing to do with this project whatsoever, but it is the basis for my calculation of the impact of this project, so that's why I'm discussing it. In 2014, this project is 2% increase. As staff calculated that if we include this project and we are able to delay all of the others, we're estimating a 7% increase in 2014, and without this project, it would've only been $5. However, starting in 2015, it's an inverse relationship. Because we can delay our other projects, our rate increase, including this project, is actually 1% less than it would've been. And in the out year, it's another 1% in 2016, and 2017, it saves us 3% in 2018, five. That's based on current estimates. So we are actually saving money by delaying our projects that we were previously planning to the tune of maybe as much as 5% in 2018. So what does that mean to users? And this is going to be hard for you guys to see, but I'll try. Let me go through it a little at a time. What I did was I did a monthly impact. Again, this rate increase doesn't start until 2014 for this project, so I started with today's rates, inflated them 11% to get to next year's rate, and then calculated in this final column with the big bold print up here at the top, what the impact would be on both the service charge and the usage for an average residential customer. And there's your answer on the $9 million project, it's a dollar a month for our average residential customer. So $12 a year, and if I have to add another million, we'll incrementally, of course, but it, or a dollar a year, a dollar a month, $12 a year for a large commercial. This is our largest commercial user in town, 2442, a month. And just an average fast food restaurant, $7.69 a month for this project beginning in 2014. And that's all I have to say, unless somebody has one.
Would you ask, are there questions?
Do you have any questions we could answer? Well, thank you very much. That concludes the public meeting. As I said, there will be a public hearing at the city council meeting immediately following this. So if you have any comments you wish to address to the council, they'll be tied along. Thanks very much.
All right. Bye.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
And I'll talk to her because I gave, I used all my high end numbers and I guess there's a discrepancy. I mean, that's the one, that's the one thing I didn't write. But, you know, it'll be, really, no, we're not, we don't have any papers yet. We do have a lot of different, different problems.
Gardner City Council will come to order if you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation proceeding. We have a proclamation. If Steve and Tom could join me. Every year, June is Business Appreciation Month in the state of Kansas, and every day is business appreciation in the City of Gardner. We certainly do appreciate all of the businesses that we have here in town, both large and small. Each of them are very, very important to our community. And with the, with the growing popularity of social media, we had a lengthy debate about how many coffee shops in a town of 19,000 needs. And it turns out, three looks to be just about right from what I can tell. I know that there's different kind of specialties in each one, and people go to each one for different reasons, and that's a great thing. And you've got another small business that reopened a restaurant in town, and then, of course, we have large corporate businesses like Coleman here in Gardner and CenturyLink. So we have a mix. We certainly want to see that, we see that grow. So whereas the City of Gardner recognizes, in spite of a challenging national economy, the contributions of local businesses to the economic strength and overall character of the city, and whereas the residents of the City of Gardner benefit daily from the displays of charity and outward support for community projects and local businesses and their members, and whereas the City of Gardner is committed to continuing development of a supportive business climate which encourages local investment, job growth, and community involvement, and whereas the city council recognizes and appreciates the dedication, innovation, and entrepreneurial spirit displayed by local businesses, now therefore be it resolved that I, David Ziegler, Vada Mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2012 as Kansas Appreciation Month in the City of Gardner, and ask citizens of this community to join with me in recognizing the contributions local businesses make in our daily lives and celebrating the richness, diversity, and success of our business community. And up here to accept, we have Steve DeBoer from the Gardner Area Chamber. Thank you very much. And Tom Reader from the Southwest Johnson County Economic Development Council. So gentlemen, would you like to say anything about business here in Gardner?
Sure, I'd like to, on behalf of the chamber, I want to thank the city, and we've been very fortunate to have a very positive relationship with the city staff. You know, I think that's what it takes to be able to build a community, is to have the cooperation and the coordination of the chamber, and the E C, and the city. We've been very, very fortunate to be able to attract new businesses. Next week, we're having a business appreciation luncheon for the public. And you're invited, too, I'm not going to leave you out. But we have 23 new businesses that located in, between Edgerton, Gardner, and New Century. And you think about the economy that we're in, we still have those folks that are identifying Gardner as a place that they want to build. So we're very excited to be able to always welcome in new businesses and appreciate the relationship we have.
As Dave mentioned, existing businesses along with new businesses are what keep an economy flourishing. We need, we need a balanced community, and we're really working hard with the cooperation of the city, the chamber, the business community, and the citizen at large to have that kind of community.
That's great. Thanks. Yeah, and we do have wonderful businesses in town. They donate time to a lot of efforts that go on. Meals on Wheels, for example, certainly they've got a visible presence with the upcoming festival on the trails this Saturday with cash donations, and then TradeNet, obviously, with Tom Mertz taking care of massive amounts of printing for that and serving that. So we have a great business community, and we certainly do appreciate. Thank you very much, Tom. Appreciate it very much, you bet. Before we move on with the agenda, members of the public are welcome to speak on items that do not appear on the agenda, that are on the agenda, that are not part of a public That being the case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there any council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
One and three.
How would council like to proceed with consent agenda item number two?
I move we approve consent agenda item number two.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Marrow, that we approve consent agenda item number two. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item number one, approval of the minutes.
A couple additions to what was recorded on the second, actually, page that talks about the waiver of distance limitations, paragraph two.
New business, I remember too? Yes. It would be page 46, actual 46 for the meeting minutes. It would be item number two.
Forty-six?
Well, we start numbering from the very beginning of the year.
Oh, okay, well, they're not, they're not numbered.
They are, right under the header. Oh, there it is.
So really, page number four, if you can.
Top left corner.
Yes, forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
No, it's forty-seven. After the part that says councilman Ramaro moved to approve the request, actually, I guess it's before that, I just added, councilmember Fotovich asked whether, or asked Tom Mertz whether the festival was providing security guards. As stated in the council action form, Mr. Mertz said no, but volunteers would be checking IDs. Captain Moore explained that there would be up to 30 or 40 officers, half from the city and half from the Johnson County Sheriff's Office. Councilmember Fotovich asked who was paying for this. Captain Moore said the city was paying for it. Mr. Fotovich asked if the city would incur overtime. Captain Moore said yes.
Regarding minutes and verbatim modifications to the minutes, as everyone knows, the recommendation from the league is to just have the item and the action associated with the item. There's been some modifications to the minutes when reviewed against the videos are not verbatim for the discussion. So I would ask council to, if so inclined, to modify the minutes, modify them in accordance with the video recording, if that's agreeable.
Well, some of the things here on discussion item number four, consent item number four, where it talks on page 45, I mean, you've got a whole paragraph there that isn't verbatim. I mean, it seems that...
No, 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 but your, your requested change was quotes. So if we're going to go verbatim, I mean, if you want to put it in a general statement, that's fine as well.
Yeah, I think the whole discussion is an important part of the minutes, and how long do we keep the videos?
I would need to get information back from the state on retention.
But these, these will go forever, right? I mean...
Well, the meeting minutes are the official record after approval, not the video with the...
So this is really a more important document?
I think what the, I think what the mayor's saying, though, is that you're asking to add something, and that, and correct me if I'm wrong, he's saying that we should check the video...
That's fine.
To add it verbatim.
However, whatever the video says is what I once stated. I'm just paraphrasing, because you paraphrased on some of the items, that one I just mentioned.
All of these are paraphrased.
Shouldn't they be verbatim if we're going to have additions be verbatim?
Well, basically, I guess we'd go back to what's recommend, what's recommended for maintaining the minutes and the recommendations for maintaining the minutes is that we list the item and then the vote, and actually decrease what it is we put in these minutes. So, I mean, I'm not bothered either way, but to, if we want to go to a verbatim minutes, then we're going to have to discuss that at budget time, because we'll need recorder, court recorder, and stenographer, and so on to do so.
I mean...
Yeah, the minutes, I don't believe, were supposed to be a transcription of the meeting.
Well, that's fine, and I don't think we've ever done that, right?
No.
So what is the difference if I add something, or she says it, you know, as a recollection of what happened without viewing the video? I mean, I...
Just so that it is indeed a true recollection of what occurred. I mean, that's my...
But you don't go back to the video and say verbatim. I mean, for instance, on that one item, you don't go back and say, let's see, I mean, after extensive discussion, councilmember Harrison moved that all questions regarding health and vision premiums, I mean, is that a verbatim statement? And then, I mean, Mr. Fotovich proposed the council bringing in health insurance benefit experts to make suggestions to the council on what can be done. I mean, those aren't verbatim either. That's a narrative of what you saw.
No, but we're asking, we're asking to modify a document that was written by someone who listened to the recording of the meeting, to create this document, and you're asking the rest of this body to vote on a modification of something that occurred over two weeks ago that may or may not be as recollected. So that was my suggestion, is that if we're going to make these modifications, then we should, as part of that modification, have the clerk verify that that is indeed what was said.
Right, I understand your, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying, why do we allow recollections that aren't verbatim?
They're not recollections. That's why I wanted to ask.
A narrative of...
You don't create the minutes off recollection. You go through the audio and then you create the minutes.
I looked at the entire meeting all the way back.
So, but I mean, it's a, it's a summation of what was said.
Yes.
And it's not word for word, so...
No.
I guess, I mean, if you want to go back and restate what I just said with all that was, what happened, I don't have a problem with that. I'd rather prefer that.
I think the mayor's concern is, we receive these packets on Tuesdays, so we have a chance to review the statements as they're stated in the minutes, just like you've done, but when you bring them to the vote for minute revision, we don't have the opportunity to go back and check those against the video to make sure they're accurate for trails. So maybe if they're submitted earlier, or if the minutes have been voted, and I think that's where they're concerned.
But the problem is... Can I, I think that, I, I understand what councilman Berth Fotovich is saying on this, because he voted no on that. So if I were him, for whatever purpose in the future, I would want something documented as to why I said no. And I think what he says kind of captures why he voted against it. That is not reflected in here, so...
That's only one reason, but yes.
But no, but I mean, that...
That's a significant thing that citizens would want to know.
Right. So, so, now, the question, though, is, how do we capture? I mean, is it, is Larry kind of summarizing that good enough, or Doreen, do you have to go back and watch it? And I don't think, you're not asking verbatim.
Well, I, I'm summarizing it in the manner that I believe it happened. I didn't go back, I mean, it's, since I was the one that said it, I think most of it's pretty accurate. I mean, he did say 20 to 40 officers. Tom Mertz did say that they didn't, they didn't have anybody, really, that was...
And all I'm, all I'm suggesting to council is that if that's the case, that we ask the clerk to go back and verbatim. I mean, is that...
Or may I suggest, if you have changes, contact me prior to the meeting, and then I can give you an amended minutes that you could vote on?
But the problem with that, though, is that, you know, I'm basically having to be the watchdog for what, mostly it's what I say. I mean, hardly anytime does anyone else here change. I've never, actually, I don't remember in the last year, anyone ever saying, I want the amended, the minutes amended. I'm the only person that ever does that.
You can't call in the last...
And it seems that all of this...
Seventeen years that anyone's asked for the minutes to be amended.
Is that right?
So, yeah.
Wow. Taxpayers are getting their money's worth on me, aren't they? I mean, this is a legal document, right? I mean, we do want it to reflect what was actually said, and why, why people voted the way they did.
Well, and then, then, should we go back and add statements to every vote? Why are you voting that way? Is that what you would like to, you'd like me to do?
I've seen a lot more detailed minutes from other city council meetings that are, you know, that are, you know...
And I've seen a lot less detailed minutes from city council meetings. All I'm asking, from council perspective, is that, as within their agreement, I don't think there's any sense in arguing, I don't think anyone's arguing that we shouldn't add what you...
Okay, I agreed earlier. I mean, if she wants to write a verbatim, and...
Oh, council, is there a motion regarding that modification?
I move that we...
Are we gonna, well, do we, are there other ones on here? I thought you had...
Yeah, there's another one, too.
Oh, there is, okay. All right.
The next one is on page 48.
But actually, we do, we do vote separately.
For each?
On each item, in the full box for discussion.
Oh, yeah, but there's, there's another, still with the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And again, here's, this is another important point that I think was left off the minutes, and I'm sure it's accidental, but it's a pretty important point on page 48, where it says, Ms. Harrison inquired, asked the MBR's cancellation policy, and then at the end of the sentence that says, you know, it ends with July 1st, councilmember Fotovich pointed out that a 90-day prior notice require a council vote on April 1st, that the council's first work session agenda item did not occur until May 14. Staff would have had to bring this discussion to council by March 1st at the latest. Councilmember Fotovich asked Ms. Gorley and Ms. Bush how council can make good policy when the deadline has already passed. Again, it's an important thing that occurred during that conversation, that the voters should know, and the citizens should know. So I move...
My suggestion remains, okay? And that it?
That's it.
All right. Is there a motion regarding consent agenda item number two?
I move we approve consent agenda item number two with the changes or additions councilmember Fotovich recommended. Actually, that would be number one. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, you're right. Number one.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Marrow, that we approve amendment of the minutes as written. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda item number three, considering authorizing interim city administrator executed contract with Holiday Contracting for the Main Street sidewalk extensions project.
I guess, I know you've answered this question, but I don't remember why the developer doesn't pay for their own sidewalk, when, you know, residential areas, developers pay for their sidewalks. I'm sure if somebody else built a project today, they'd have to pay for sidewalks, so that's residential, commercial, right?
There's a, could you put that? There we go. This drawing shows the two sections of sidewalk that are involved in this contract. The south side, there's really no developer to put on, it's about a six-hundred-foot gap. The north side, as you point out, sir, that if and when that develops, a sidewalk would be installed. Back when this project was initiated two years ago, these gaps had been in place for many years. The then-city administrator had said, let's go ahead and get both sides taken care of, and that's the genesis of this project. As I say, the south side, there is no developer to install it. The north side, city could choose to wait for that to develop.
And who owns that property?
It's owned by Cosentinos.
Oh. They're not required, when the project went in, to have a sidewalk?
That went in many, many years ago. I can't tell you what the circumstances were.
Doesn't it, I mean, have we asked them to pay for that? I mean, is there any legal rationale as to why they shouldn't pay for it? I mean-
They can wait till they develop, or we could install it now.
There's no way, unless you're going to form a benefit district, to force them to pay for it. It's just normal development process to wait for development, and the sidewalks go in at that time.
So do we, I mean, why do we want to not wait for that to happen?
Because we have a number of people that utilize the sidewalk, or the lack of the sidewalk, and walk to Walgreens, to Casey's, to other businesses, and when we had the Moonlight Project put in, that was one of the desires of the residents that lived in that area was to have walkability to the schools, Wheat Ridge, and then the businesses. So with that sidewalk ending, we're asking people to either go different routes or walk on the state highway.
Or through the grass, right? I mean, it's not like they're not protected.
Yeah, or through the grass, you know? I mean, so I guess the, you know, question is, do we, as a community, want to create a project that enhances the safety of pedestrian traffic or let it go? You know, I think we talked about it, and the consensus of the council was to move forward. So, you know, I mean, if you have a motion that you'd like to deny this, I'd be willing to entertain that motion, but I don't know that further discussion is going to modify other council members' minds regarding this project.
I can understand the south side, if there's no, I mean, that's right away.
I guess, again, is there any council member who's going to modify their position regarding this because of further discussion on this item? In that case, I would entertain a motion to either deny or approve Consent Item Number Three.
I move we approve Consent Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
Motion Morrow, Second Freeman, that we approve Consent Item Number Three. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. New Business Item Number One, Consider Appointment of Randy Grigorchak to the Gardner City Council. With the resignation of Councilmember Broxerman, we do need to appoint a council member to fill the remaining term of office, which will expire in April two thousand, twenty-thirteen. With the recent appointment of Councilmember Freeman, I had a very good pool of qualified candidates, and rather than go out again for additional candidates, I felt that it was certainly sufficient to utilize that pool. And from that pool, I would recommend Randy Grigorchak to, for appointment to the council. Randy's here. He's certainly available for questions. Randy's been to a number of council meetings. There is a summary in here regarding his current employment, as well as some information about his personal life, his wife and daughter are in the back, and she's being very, very good, I'm glad to note. Randy's also worked for Gardner Edgerton High School as a substitute for a few times, was a teacher in Wichita. So with that, I will open the floor to any questions for Randy that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor.
No questions?
I've got one, I was just-
Go ahead.
Checked your voting history report-
Yep.
And see that you voted since two thousand and four twice.
Mm-hmm.
And there were nine times that you could have exercised that right vote.
Absolutely.
And now you're not only not, I mean, you're, you're not interested in voting as a public citizen, but you're, you're interested in voting as a council member. What, why?
Well, let me correct you first. So let's take a step back. Based on that voting record is really parallel to my travel schedule. As a client relations manager that supports several Fortune 500 companies, I was on the road for about twenty-four to twenty-six months, the previous months, and unfortunately, I didn't exercise the absentee ballot based on my schedule and timing and the location in which I was on the destination side. So to your second point, I don't know that-
You could have, though.
I don't know that, that your point is completely valid, that I'm not interested in voting. It's more of a, obviously, it's a right, and second of all, I just didn't have the opportunity to vote, but it's not, not at all indicative of where I stand despite, despite that track record.
But you agree that most people, to exercise their right in a democracy, vote if they really care, right?
Absolutely, and I've already exhibited that to, to the stats that you just read off.
Two out of nine times.
True.
Twenty-two percent, probably.
Yeah. And speaking of stats, I mean, you know, we can conversely speak to Councilman Fotovich's stats of voting no versus yes, so, I mean, I don't know where that's here nor there.
What is, what is your point?
My point is, whether you're voting yes twenty-two percent of the time, or whether you're voting no eighty-two percent of the time, or eighty-eight percent of the time, I don't know that that's imperative.
You're getting appointed, right? I mean, you're getting appointed.
Absolutely.
You're not going through an election.
Right.
And don't you think most citizens would care that you did not exercise the most basic right?
I think the city of cities would be more interested in, in what I was voting on from a quality perspective versus a quantity perspective, and I appreciate your questions.
Who's your second choice, Mayor? Do you have a second choice?
I didn't bring a second choice forward.
Do you have somebody else in mind?
No. I have Mr. Grigorchak in mind.
Any other questions?
Ray, you mentioned your travel schedule just before and some of those things. I think, from our conversation, that's changed a little bit, and right now, you don't have any travel requirements that high in your attendance or anything.
Absolutely. Let me touch base on that a little bit. As the mayor pointed out, my wife and daughter are here. We adopted six months ago after about a two-and-a-half-year process, and so we're very humbled to have our little girl in our lives. She's, matter of fact, six months, just three or four days ago. But during that period of time, I was traveling extensively, and part of that was a necessary evil in order to get to our goals. And to Larry's point, I didn't take the time to slow down, if you will, and exercise my right to vote. But more importantly, since MBS has come into our lives through the adoption process and based on the relationships that I had with my previous employer, I was able to take a severance of about six months and recently found, found work within the same industry, based on networking and so forth, locally. So now I'm servicing Alatha Overland Park area, home every night, able to continue to, you know, attend the meetings as I have been as a constituent, a voting constituent, I might add. And, and so, yes, to answer your question, I'm not on the road and very happy not to be on the road.
Speaking, I guess, of statistics, since it was brought up, since, I can recall, yes, I'll start back in February of this year, probably, what percentage of both work sessions and city council meetings have you probably attended?
No, I would have to understand what the total number of work sessions and committee meetings are, but I would say it's probably between seventy-five and eighty-two percent, but I'm guessing.
I think that's-
So, I mean, I'd have to look back through the records, if you will, but that really stood for the commitment well before the appointment, quite frankly, because I felt like it was my civic duty in order to get involved in a community that I live in, that I own a home in, and now I've got a family. So it was really less about, you know, my percentage of voting and more about getting involved in my community in order to understand what I need to vote against or for.
What are your thoughts on the intermodal?
Thoughts on intermodal?
Is that a good thing for the community?
As, as a property owner, I think it's a wonderful thing for, for the community. You're going to have a lot of blue-collar workers coming into town, and they're going to be looking for places to move. With that being said, I, I think we need to embrace what's ahead of us versus looking in the rearview mirror.
How about the recall? Did you follow that issue?
I'm sorry, Larry, but no, I didn't. I was on the road.
You know about Charter Order Nineteen?
No, I don't have my laptop in front of me to, to fill that question.
Basically, it gives the right of, to the mayor to appoint, and if the council does not approve that appointment within forty-five days, it, it takes place anyway. Would you be in favor of changing that rule after you're on?
A little correction, that state statute that-
Yeah, I was going to say-
That's a state statute. It's actually KSA twelve dash sixteen dash-
You have to opt out of that, but as it stands now, I guess perhaps maybe I'm summarizing what happened.
We are not exempt. We have not exempted ourselves from that.
Would you be in favor of exempting?
I'd have to really dig into it, Larry, in order to give you a valid educational answer to that point.
Do you think that the, that the community is best served by the mayor appointing people or-
I think the mayor has a fiduciary responsibility to the constituents of this town to appoint to that seat that's available based on, in Brian's case, the betterment of his family by moving to Topeka in order to take that job. And I think that there's some consistency that comes with, with, or, I'm sorry, that comes with the appointment in being able to keep the city government moving in a positive direction.
Any other questions?
Ethan, Larry, I appreciate your questions. Yes, Mr. Morrow.
Randy, if you're appointed, do you see yourself running for reelection next spring?
Absolutely.
If you were not appointed for any reason, would you be running for council next spring?
Yeah, matter of fact, if you don't mind, Dennis Wilson and Dave Lundstrom are here as a support mechanism, but really, that was the whole reason why I reached out to them, because despite the appointment, it was my intent, based on my work schedule changing and my commitment to the community, that I, that I would run for the two open seats, I believe, at that time.
And if you, if you don't get appointed tonight and you don't win the election, how will you participate in public policy for the city?
Obviously, through committees, and then once the, the opportunity arises through, through those seats becoming available through votes, I'll lobby the constituents to, to vote me in.
Other questions? How would council like to proceed with new business item number one?
I move that we approve the appointment of Randy Grigorchak to the Gardner City Council with the term expiration of April two thousand and thirteen, and direct the city clerk to administer the oath of office to the newly-appointed council member.
Second.
Motion Freeman, Second Morrow, that we approve the, the council approve the appointment of Randy Grigorchak to the Gardner City Council. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I am Randy Grigorchak, do you solemnly swear? That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind changing the pronunciation of your name to Chico.
You had a little worry, Mayor, because I thought, uh-oh.
It's all right, I, you know. I will work hard to get it right. I apologize very much. Not necessary. All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Mr. Lundstrom, Director Wilson, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to be here.
Okay. New Business Item Number Two, Considering Selecting a Vice President of the Council. Councilmember Broxerman was Vice President of the Council, and with his departure, we do need to reappoint that position. That position would serve as, as running the meeting in the event that the mayor and the president were unable to attend a given meeting. So with that, I'll open up the, the item for nominations.
I move we select Chris Morrow as Vice President of the Council.
Second.
Third.
Motion Harrison, Second Fotovich, that we appoint Chris Morrow as Vice President of the Council. Any questions?
I'm, I got nominated, and am I supposed to vote?
Yeah, you can vote.
Oh, okay.
I think we'd all be interested to see how you vote. All right, any questions? No? Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Did you get that?
I did.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next meeting, we'll do the seat switch. Move from there. New Business Item Number Three, Consider Approving a Special Event Permit to Allow Austin's Bar &amp; Grill to Sell Retail Cereal Malt Beverages for Consumption on the premises for a fundraising event to be held Sunday, June ninth, two thousand, sorry, Saturday, June ninth, two thousand and twelve, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is brought forth to you as an application for your consideration for a special event permit to allow Austin's Bar &amp; Grill to retail CMB at a fundraiser that they're having this Saturday, June ninth. The fundraiser is to benefit an employee who's going through cancer treatment, so the employees have gotten together and pulled this event together. As it states here, it is Saturday, June the ninth, and it's going to take place on the west side of the Moonlight Commons parking. And if you look at the map, I attempted to highlight it in yellow, but it's at the very top of the screen. Austin's has asked and received the approval of their landlord, Mr. De Vilbas, to host this event. Three two beer will be served within the confines of this tent. Security will be provided, interior security, and the people that will be security are employees of Austin's who are donating their time volunteering to be at this event, so they will be checking IDs, they will be giving people wristbands to handle control. The hours of operation of the beer tent will be from twelve PM to eleven. There was a question that Mr. Freeman had asked about parking, and I think we've explained that. that. There is parking available due to, let's see, the karate studio in, let's see, Central National Bank, and I had one more business there. And all of those businesses will be closed at the time the beer garden will be opening. There's going to be additional parking in the back of Austin's. The field will be mowed, and there will be signage pointing to this parking for people. This application was presented to the Gardner Police Department, and I received the chief's approval to go forward with this permit should the council decide to approve it. Here this evening is Elizabeth Medcap. She's with Austin's, and if you have any specific questions that she might be able to answer that I have not answered for you, she can make herself available.
Are there gonna be Gardner police officers on duty, more so than the normal amount?
That I don't know, since we do not have a police department present, I do not know that.
Mike, do you know?
I've talked to Captain Moore about it, and he said it's covered with routine patrol, but they'll keep an extra eye out. But he didn't think there was gonna be any specific additional requirements.
Why doesn't they wanna have it inside? Just not enough room?
Stage area. What else?
Yeah, doesn't sound... Matt Caffey wanted to come up and answer questions regarding logistics.
I feel like I have the weight of the world on my shoulders right now. Sorry.
You're not getting the point, so you don't have to answer those questions.
What was the question? I'm sorry. Why is it outside instead of inside? We don't have the area inside to have live music and that kind of thing, or to support, hopefully, the amount of people that were expecting to come. So hopefully, more people come than what we can hold.
Randy, did you have any citizens reach out and have any disapproval of this at all? I didn't receive any. Did anyone else on the council?
No.
Okay.
No, I did not.
Are you, is this in conjunctions with the Alifa location? Okay, so both sides are promoting this activity?
Yes.
Did you have anything you'd like to say?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I hope you guys all come. So it starts, we have the permit from twelve till eleven, but it actually starts at two. Should be a really good time. It's gonna do a great lady. So if you wanna come by, it should be a lot of fun. So, it's a completion thing.
Any other questions from council? How would council like to proceed?
I move we approve a special event permit to allow Austin's Bar and Grill to retail cereal malt beverages for consumption on the premises for a fundraising event to be held on June ninth, two thousand and twelve.
Second. Motion Morrow, second, Harrison, that we approve a special event permit to allow Austin's Bar and Grill to retail cereal malt beverages for consumption on premises for fundraising events to be held June ninth, two thousand and twelve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
You bet. Wish you much success. New business item number four, hold a public hearing to discuss the Big Bull Creek wastewater treatment plant project as a requirement of the associated KDHE loan process. Laura?
This is a requirement for the loan application for the KDHE loan for the Big Bull Creek wastewater treatment plant project we're doing in conjunction with the City of Edgerton. As a brief history, in February, council discussed this project and partnering with the City of Edgerton to build this wastewater treatment plant, and the plant will be owned and operated by the City of Edgerton, but the City of Gardner will provide funding for the enhancements that are necessary to take care of that which is ours that we made, our wastewater. And in doing this, the construction of this wastewater treatment plant with Edgerton delays the needed expansion of our own, much larger Kill Creek, existing Kill Creek sewer plant. It would be more expensive to upgrade ours than it is to partner with this one, because this is a smaller plant and can be added on to incrementally in smaller increments. Adding benefits of partnering with Edgerton in the construction of this treatment plant is that it reduces the peak load on the south lift station. It reduced, I already mentioned, it delays the expansion to the, I'm sorry, it delays the expansion to the existing Bull Creek station, and it also opens the southwest portion of the city for development. So in March, the mayor was authorized to get into an agreement with the City of Edgerton for this additional treatment capacity and to fund it. And at the May seventh meeting, council approved a resolution authorizing that we file the application of KDHE. So now, these next steps is to have a public meeting, which we had at six thirty, and a public hearing, which will be up to the mayor to open now. These are requirements of the loan. And Mr. Keller with Burns and McDonald is here, as is Mr. Hamby with BG Consultants. Both have worked on this project at length. If you have anything else, or if citizens have any questions to address.
With that, I will open the public meeting. We will hold council discussion until after the, excuse me, the public hearing, after the public hearing regarding this matter. So is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the Big Bull Creek wastewater treatment project as presented? That being the case, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Show move.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, Morrow, that we close the public hearing. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business item number five, consider adopting a resolution approving the 2013-2017 County Assistance Road System Program for road improvements within the City of Edgerton. Before we move on to that, I apologize...
They said that's a requirement that they make the presentation.
Oh, it is a requirement?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll, we will have a presentation regarding the project.
We'll keep it short. I just wanted to explain, I'm David Hamby with BG Consultants, assisting in the loan application process, assisting with that loan application process. This is a part of the step rolling loan fund process, and we're gonna talk about tonight at the public hearing. We're gonna discuss the facility plan, the proposed improvements to the city's wastewater system, the estimated cost of the proposed improvements, the estimated cost of operation, maintenance, and replacement of the proposed improvements, and also how these costs are estimated to impact the city's wastewater sewer user charges. And at this point, I'll turn over to Jeff Keller with Burns and McDonald to make the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. We will keep this pretty brief, but we'll be open for any questions the council might have, if public might have.
Do you want to make sure?
Yeah, I wanted to put that first one up. I do have just a few slides to help facilitate the discussion, but we'll go through this kind of stepwise in terms of the items that the, that's our only...
One second. Doreen, do we need to reopen the public hearing?
Yes, we do, sir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Show move.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, Morrow, that we reopen the public hearing. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So the first thing we'll talk about is the existing facility plans that exist. There'll be another facility plan for Gardner Infrastructure specifically. We'll talk about what the improvements are, what the project contains, in terms of scope, in terms of cost, in terms of O and M costs, and then there'll be a discussion on how it's funded and the impact on sewer user charges. So what's up on your screen right now is an attempt to try and put the entire project in context. It's a, it goes all the way from, you know, South Gardner Road off to the side a little bit, across Waverly Road, across Homestead Lane, and to Four Corners going east to west, and you're down near the intersection of Homestead Road and I-35 to the south.
Sorry.
And up to where the intermodal facility we built to the north. That's sort of the geographic area we're looking at. What the figure shows, just below the edge of the screen would be where the wastewater plant's site is, and then the shared facilities, which consist of a thirty-six and thirty-inch gravity sewer, we call it an interceptor, that run north up to, along the west side of Homestead Lane. Somewhere in between one hundred and ninety-ninth and one hundred and ninety-first Street, that changes to a pumped line, a line that is pressurized by pump stations. In that trench, there are two pipes, one that's owned by Edgerton, one that's owned by Gardner, shared in the same trench. The Edgerton one ultimately goes up to the intermodal facility. The Gardner continues on east on one hundred and ninety-first Street. Right about at maybe a few hundred feet or nearly a thousand feet to the west of Waverly Road is where the project sort of ends in terms of the shared facilities. At that point, as you get closer to Waverly Road, which I have, I'll point out a few names to the public to kind of see what I'm talking about, but I'm afraid the council might not be able to, but once you get within a thousand foot or so of Waverly Road, that shared trench for the two force mains set, ends, and there'll be a single force main that's owned by Gardner. It'll come across Waverly Road, it'll go north to a pump station that will be built. And then between that point and the existing sewer system, there'll be a gravity interceptor that'll be about a fifteen-inch pipe. Those are some other slides we'll get into, but that gives you an idea of the entire scope of the project. In terms of facility plans, there's already a facility plan that was written for Gardner's, for, I'm sorry, for Edgerton's project as it was originally envisioned. That was submitted March twenty-third to KDHE. It's a public document. It contains a evaluation of different technologies. It, the technology was chosen based on cost, based on operational complexity, and based on its proven ability to meet the water quality requirements that the state sets. Once the two communities, Gardner and Edgerton, started talking about working together and were headed down that path, a updated design memorandum to support the facility plan was written that describes the changes to the project that would support Gardner also. That was issued March twenty-ninth, 2012. And once those Gardner-only facilities, the pipeline and the pump station, are fully designed, and once the final price is agreed upon by the design build team in the City of Gardner, there'll be a short facility plan written for that. So that'll satisfy the requirement for facility plans, and those are all, again, public documents. So let's just talk real quick about two or three pieces of these proposed improvements.
You wanna go to the next slide, please?
Okay, I can scroll down a little bit. This is the collection system itself, and it shows most of what was envisioned just west of Waverly Road. I sort of talked about it already. There's a gravity pipeline that runs up Homestead Lane. It's primarily thirty-inch. Originally, it was conceived to be twenty-four inch until the two communities got together, so there was an upsize in that pipeline. There's also a force main that's gonna be ten inches, a ten-inch one for Edgerton, a ten-inch one for Gardner, running the same trench together until they get to about midway between Homestead and Waverly. At that point, that ten-inch line for Gardner continues on to the east until you get across Waverly Road, there'll be a new pump station built with a capacity of about one point five million gallons per day to serve Gardner, to serve that drainage basin in that area. And then from there, there's a gravity sewer that'll be built, pipeline with manholes. What that'll do is it'll allow the city to connect to your existing sewer system and siphon off sewage that would have otherwise been treated at your existing wastewater plants and send it down to Edgerton. That relieves a lot of pressure off of your existing plants. It relieves a lot of pressure off your existing collection system and off of the pump station that's reaching its limit of capacity. And you'll be able to meter that. There'll be a valve so you can increase the flow or reduce the flow. If you go to the next slide, we'll look at the wastewater treatment plant very quickly. This is just a schematic, and there's a lot of lines and circles, but basically, it's a biological treatment plant with disinfection, with filtration. Its capacity is half a million gallons per day, and per the intermunicipal agreements, Gardner has a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallon per day treatment capacity there, and Edgerton has a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallon per day treatment capacity there. So you split it fifty-fifty in accordance with the cost sharing. This is in compliance with all of the state requirements, and it will achieve the water quality that's needed in the drainage basin, and importantly, it's very expandable, and the expansions are relatively inexpensive, meaning this first push is much more expensive than the expansions will be. It has a capacity of half a million gallons per day. The property that's been purchased will allow the facility to be expanded up to at least three million gallons a day, which takes you out a very, very far out in the time horizon. Okay, next slide, please. Next picture really just shows the pipeline facilities that are dedicated to Gardner. It's kind of outlined in this red cloud, and if you start on the left side, that's where your force main leaves that shared trench where you're lying next to Edgerton's force main. And you go along one hundred and ninety-first Street, you cross Waverly Road, which runs north-south in the middle of the screen, and there'll be a lift station somewhere on the east side of Waverly Road, north of one hundred and ninety-first, with a capacity of one point five million gallons a day. And then your gravity sewer, which sort of runs along that stream, will be putting the pipeline within the hundred-year floodplain. The reason for that is it will allow the maximum availability of lands for development on that side of the stream, and because it's ninety-nine and a half percent buried structures, it doesn't impact the floodplain. So that gives you all the benefit that you can have. And then on the far left side is where it connects to an existing pressure line that is in Gardner's gravity sewer. So that's the facility. Maybe I'll stop for just a second and ask if there's any questions before I ramble on. Air, please? Oh, wait, that's fantastic. Estimated cost of the proposed improvements. Okay, I'll break this down into just a few pieces, and I'm available to talk about any of the pieces you want. Gardner shared the wastewater treatment plant. Fifty percent of it is therefore fifty percent of the cost, five point one million dollars. The incremental cost to take that gravity sewer that runs up Homestead Road and go from a twenty-four-inch pipe to a thirty-inch pipe, so it's a slightly more expensive pipe, it's a wider trench, it's more bedding material all the way up the road, is about one point two million dollars. And then the stretch of force main that will lie next to Edgerton's force main in a shared trench is four hundred thousand dollars. That adds up to about six point seven million. That's the project that's really underway right now for final design and construction. The remainder of it is in preliminary design. We're doing geotechnical borings, survey, trying to determine what that final cost will be. So this next bunch of numbers is really a range, and it falls in a range of somewhere between two point three and three point two million dollars. That covers your pipeline and your pump station. The main driver of that cost is how deep is the rock? How much rock do you have to dig out? We have some preliminary geotechnical information, and it's really good news. Most of that pipeline will sit above the rock, so we're hoping it's gonna be more towards the lower end of the cost and not the higher, but we have to look at it a little bit more. Really, that's about as far as I can go on that. But that will be your gravity sewer, it'll be your force main, it'll be your pump station, the ability to meter flow out of your existing collection system and draw it out, all that will be in that two point three to three point two million dollar range. As a comparison, your alternative to doing this with expanding your existing wastewater plants and also doing a lot of improvements along the way, the pump stations, the pipelines, which a lot of them were built in developed areas, which we had estimated would be somewhere, you know, sixteen million dollars to expand the wastewater plant and maybe nine point one million dollars in improvements to the conveyance system. So this is a less expensive alternative that relieves all that pressure to expand and pushes it further and further down the road. The last item here is to talk about the estimated cost of operation. What is estimated when the plant is running at one hundred percent? So Gardner would be shoving every drop you could send down that pipeline, and Edgerton would be sending everything it could primarily to the intermodal. It would be about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars a year. Now, that cost is incorporated in the wholesale rate that Gardner will pay for sewer service. It's not an additional cost. It's wrapped up into that wholesale rate. So, you know, it's two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars as a total, but it's not something that's a line item of expense that you have to write out there.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
If a developer wants to develop a site on the Edgerton side...
Yes.
Can he still tap into the Gardner supply?
Well, I think that, I mean, I don't know the answer to that, and the reason I don't is because we'd have to be sure what we're talking about is where the Gardner side is, where the Edgerton side is. If they wanna tie into the interceptor going up and down Homestead, for example, you know, there'd have to be a discussion of whether it's that Gardner, City of Gardner property or that City of Edgerton property, and I don't know the answer to that. But if it's in the City of Edgerton, it'd be Edgerton's. If it's in the City of Gardner's, it'd be Gardner's. If it's in the city of Gardner's, it'd be Gardner's.
And they would not have the ability to do a, basically initiate a bidding war between the cities for cheaper sewage?
Well, the city of Edgerton is providing a service to the city of Gardner, so the city's paying a rate to Edgerton. And so if a business moved into Gardner, they would pay the city of Gardner, not the city of Edgerton. So it'd be a different direction where that might go. The only person who's paying Edgerton out of the city of Gardner is the city government for that service.
But they can negotiate different rates, as can we?
I don't know.
Have you ever seen a system like this before?
Yeah, there's a number of them. Where different communities come together and build a single plant and a collection system. Across the state line, the Littlewood Valley Sewer District does that with Lee Summit, Raymore, I think there's seven or eight different communities there.
Does one, one community owns it, the other one leases it?
The district owns it. And then down in Arkansas, there's a couple of them that operate that way, too, where one city owns the main facility, it's in their city limits, but the collection system reaches out to other communities.
And those are just the ones that you know about?
They're just the ones that I know about, yes, in the Midwest. It's fairly common because the wastewater infrastructure is still clogged.
And we have an agreement with the city of O'Leary for the sewer on 175th, street north of 175th, between Homestead, or Edgeline and, you know, the highway.
But they're not an owner of that facility. I mean, we treat their sewage for them, right?
No, no, it's pipe, it's conveyance there, but treatment.
We also have one with Copperspring, Johnson County.
Copperspring.
Johnson County, which water treats Copperspring.
And Johnson County actually has an agreement with Kansas City, Missouri, where they take some of the flow from Johnson County, and so the county pays Kansas City, Missouri In terms of funding the project, that's a state revolving fund loan, which is the reason we're having this meeting in the first place, it's the requirements, and to talk about the impact on user charges is a finance director.
So as I presented at the meeting, and I presented in May 7th, when we talked about how we would save money by being able to delay our more expensive expansion of our own infrastructure, I mentioned at that meeting that currently, STAS is projecting an eleven percent increase on sewer rates for 2013. That has nothing to do with this project. This project does not start impacting the city's budget until 2014. And in the first, the second line here is rate increases without this project. So if we had not done this project, it'd be eleven percent this year, and then I said it would be five ongoing for quite some time, longer than the timeline we were projecting. And with this project, in 2014, it does indeed cost us the first year an additional two percent, more than it would otherwise on my projections. But in the following years, it actually begins to drop. And as you can see that last line where it says impact rates, because of this project, we're actually saying it'll save a percent here, save a percent here, save three percent here, and maybe up to five percent here in 2018. And then so, because we're also, requirement to discuss the rate, the impact of those rates on users, I created this spreadsheet. And again, I began with this year's current rates here, and I went ahead and took the eleven percent here so I could tell what the impact was in 2014 for this project. And right here, it's a dollar a month because of this project in 2014 for residential. It's twenty-four forty-two a month for a large commercial user, and that's one of our very large users. And then a fast food restaurant, seven sixty-nine a month. And that's based on the rate increase from next year, so I went ahead and projected out.
What rate of sewage treatment are you talking about per person in the residential?
It's five thousand for residential as a whole, not per person, it's just an average sewer rate.
But every time I've called and talks with the gals that figure bills, they say that average is about two thousand gallons per person, so.
They gave me five thousand as the average, and it's also what the suggestion from consultants to use.
It's billed per household, not per person.
It's billed per household.
Right, but I mean, on average, two thousand gallons a person is...
Well, I can change it right here, spreadsheet. Let me change it.
But if you average two and a half people, that's five thousand gallons on average.
So, I mean, I projected a dollar based on five thousand. We can plug in any number we want, it would calculate right here, right now.
Can we go back to the slide of sewer rates?
Sure.
So basically, with this initial investment, we're going to be netting, what, ten percent thereafter over the next four or five years?
Yes.
It's a pretty good investment.
Cost avoidance, yeah.
Well, it's delay, not avoidance, delay.
Does that include the cost of maintenance after those first years when it's new? I mean, isn't there going to be some maintenance that, you're just talking about the amortization of the cost?
No, this is projected, this is actually based on the sewer fund, which includes cost to treat, this is everything, O and M. This isn't just the debt.
If that's the case, then, that there's no components that will need to be replaced, or that accounts for that?
Well, this is only a five-year frame.
But you make an assumption of a certain amount of, I mean, you make an assumption based on the size of the facility of what the cost would be annually to replace various things break and wear out, and it's a small percentage of the total facility value, and that's part of that O and M cost that wasn't included in the overall projection.
But, I mean, we have that today. I mean, we're going to eliminate costs today by doing this. So I mean, I don't know that it would balance out, but it's on both budgets' bench.
But if we don't have any development out there, is there savings then?
Yes, because you're sending flow, you'll be able to send flow there on day one, which relieves the burden of your existing treatment plant, reduces your operational costs.
But if we pay for that, even if, right, I mean, there's a minimum that we pay Edgerton?
There's a minimum we'll pay, but you can easily send that much flow.
To offset it.
Easily.
We need a motion to close the...
Say, are there any other questions, or is there anything else that needs to be presented?
Do we have to do anything else?
You need to ask the public if they have any questions now that they've presented.
Yeah, now that the public has heard more information, are there any other questions or comments for the public hearing? If being the case, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Marrow that we close the public hearing. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Hang on, Dave. I've got your flash drive. I'm getting Dave's picture.
What resolution will this be?
Eighteen seventy-one.
One eight seventy-one. Okay, new business item number five, consider adopting resolution one eight seven one approving the 2013 to 2017 county assistance road system program for road improvements within the city of Gardner, Kansas. David.
The county puts together a new cars program on an annual basis. The following year, the next budget year would be a firm funding. The next five years are for planning purposes only. Cars has funded numerous projects in the city, notably North and South Center Street. The Moonlight Road projects received four million dollars or so in county aid. We've been able to pick up a few other projects recently, of the Madison Street project of two years ago and 183rd Street last year. This year, we did not request a project next year because of just funds availability. However, to keep ourselves in queue, to continue to show the need for the system, we did put three maintenance projects in the out years. These are the same projects we presented last year to them, updated the costs, moved Moonlight Road rehab from thirteen, as it was last year, to fourteen. Gardner Road reconstruction, which is going overlay, that road was built 2003, it's getting to the point where we're going to need to do some resurfacing in 2016, that would be the south part of it, south of 183rd Street. And then 2017, Gardner Road from 183rd to Grand Street. Once again, this is submitted based on funds availability as we see it now. We have the opportunity to change this on an annual basis. We didn't really have the availability next year for our share of a project since we have the main and Center Street project going. But once again, next year, we can reevaluate and request money. County funds fifty percent of construction cost, the city would be responsible for all design and right-of-way and utility relocation. The resolution's a requirement for them to keep this request in their system.
David, are there certain requirements that a project has to meet to be eligible for the cars programs?
There are, the, there's two requirements for projects. One, there is the so-called Cars arterial system or major collector system. Essentially, that's the section line roads. In Gardner, that would be Center, 167th, Moonlight, 1483rd Street. Those do not have a traffic volume component as far as eligibility. Now, as far as the evaluation goes, it can get into, will be taken into consideration when reviewing other projects. Then there's the Cars minor collector system, which would connect to Cars routes. So there was some discussion, well, what about Grand Street? Well, the way that's set up, it has to be an existing street, so you can't put new streets following the Cars minor collector criteria. Case would be Madison Street falls under that criteria.
Okay.
Other questions? How would council like to proceed with resolution one eight seven one?
I move we adopt resolution one eight seven one approving the 2013 to 2017 county assistance road system program for road improvements within the city of Gardner, Kansas.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Freeman that we adopt resolution one eight seven one. Harrison?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Fotovich?
Yes.
Bragorsik?
Yes, sir.
One eight seven one passes. Before we move to adjournments, staff, any updates for council?
I can give a quick update on this past weekend or two. The opening of the Gardner Aquatic Center was Memorial Day weekend, and the weather was perfect for it. Had very good attendance over the weekend, over thirty-six hundred folks visited the facility, so it wasn't so much a soft opening weekend, but a successful one nonetheless. Saw a lot of activity in the community this past weekend. We hosted a Sports America baseball tournament, which had a record number of sixty-six teams in it, both at West Side Park and Celebration Park, and that went very well. It was Friday evening through all day Sunday. And at the same time, we hosted a forty-team youth soccer tournament at Celebration Park, so that's what all the activity was around, and some of you probably saw a lot of uniforms in town and a lot of activities. So staff did a great job preparing for and working the events, and it was a big success.
Anyone else, staff? Council, questions for staff?
I've actually, you know, it's great that we've got Randy joining us on the council Mr. Mayor and my, you guys, we've talked before about the election and then appointment process, and seeing as how we've appointed another member, I was just wondering if we could get a consensus about whether or not we should get that on an upcoming work session to see what the council would like to do. I've got very specific ideas about what I would like to see done, and just like to see it move forward, but, you know, it's a deliberative body and a majority rule, so.
I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts, Chris, in reviewing that. Is it something that we might want to wait until after budget season, where the first of the fall? Is it, hopefully, we'd like to think it's not a pressing matter. Of course, that's never something we can guarantee at this point, but there is a lot of things that will be coming up over the summer, but maybe the end of August or the first of September is something we can put that on a work session in tonight?
Yeah, you know, if we can get it on by August after the budget's submitted, you know, but that's, and, but probably before staff goes on vacation. But yeah, I would like to have a conversation among council about it. I've got particular things that I would like to see, Mayor Trevino knows, Mr. Press knows, but.
Typically, because of the budget season in Kansas, we have to approve our budget August 15th, and so staff typically delays vacation until after that. So immediately after that point, we usually have a vacation period before we get into, so there's a little absence at that point, but that's the case. The other items, I mean, with respect to the issues associated with the appointment process, per se, Councilmember Fotovich alluded to the statute that councils must provide a resolution as to why someone is unfit, or if they don't vote, wait, you know, it's appointments after forty-five days. That's a statute that can be...
Chartered out.
Chartered out. The other piece we have is state statute also has a non-uniform statute regarding primaries. And many cities have chartered out of that requirement that a primary not occur until four candidates for a two-person opening, and they've gone, you know, they've just chartered out of that and gone to a standard primary where if you have more than two candidates for a single seat, then you're allowed a primary. And so that would be another piece that we have not chartered out of that would be part of that discussion.
Why would you want to charter out?
It's part of the discussion.
We wanted to review others.
Yeah, it's just the number of cities chartered out of it because they, you know, it's their decision. We've never had an issue regarding, we've always had a primary since that statute's been in place, so it didn't save us any money. And that was the intent, was to save money. But most, most of the cities, at least in Johnson County, I don't know about the rest of the state, but at least in Johnson County, have chartered out of that one as well as the appointment provision. The appointment provision was a result of a library board in western Kansas, I can't remember exactly the city. So those are two of the items in addition to the way we're structured from an at-large city to a lord city in those, so that's the intent of the discussion. So if we were to have that in place by the next year's spring election, I mean, it's a fairly short order because you've got to allow a sixty-day protest period, and so you've got to back into the dates to get there. So that, I mean, that's the only reason for having it, and it's fairly as soon as possible. You know, or if you, you know, consider holding the spring as is and then go to that as a...
With the discussion itself and work session environment, I mean, would it be necessary to have a full staff at hand just for the discussion time? So we really don't need to wait for the vacation season to be over to have the discussion and create action items, but then they can pull up on it at that point rather than waiting.
We have to have staff, I mean, there's been, yeah, there's been work sessions when we've, we have canceled just because of, yeah, so.
Well, that's the case.
But I think, you know, at that point, Cheryl will be on board, you know, she won't be as familiar, but we may, we can bring in... You know, she won't be as familiar, but we may, we can bring in Jim's familiarity, you know, somebody that understands ramifications and, you know, arrange to have someone from the league present to talk about it and discuss impacts of going in different directions. I think that's the case, you know, what happens, this, what happens if you don't do that.
I would like, I mean, I'd like to entertain at least targets like that, work session in September.
Sure, the, right after Labor Day, that's a first work session, sure.
I think that's great. I think that's a perfect time to do it.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Freeman, that we adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I say it, I said it wrong forever.
I didn't know it was wrong.
I need a real pen. This one's a push.